Thank you.
My board of docs is not working. Okay, now that we're back into regular session, if you'll just give me a moment to see if I can.
Ms. Diane.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
And this little blue thing that's running around, like usually means it's doing. We have a few lists. Uh, the special meeting work session. I don't mean to run you guys around like that, but, uh, Mrs. Elder, would you, uh, collect these? Ms. Wick said she wants them. And I remember one of the Cleveland Board of Education.
Um, today, yes.
It was today.
Okay, here, you can have my phone, I'll take it. Uh huh, thank you. The first thing on the agenda is the resolution to approve Steve Barnesworth as the.
Excuse me, Dr. Rice?
Yeah.
There is a resolution to appoint the candidate?
Thank you, yes. Uh, you, uh, anyone else you want to make their, um, motion? To finish up what we were working on. Yes. It down the bottom, it says possible board action and board action, whatever your resolution. I know. We don't have an agenda right back.
This is our board notes.
If you look at your board notes. For those that can get in under C, under executive session.
What we're looking for is a resolution to appoint Mr. Wilson to the East Cleveland Public Library Board of Trustees.
Hey, let us see.
Okay, uh, if any, he cannot seem to see it.
He said after the meeting, see him approve of October twenty seventh board agenda.
No, under, you under the wrong one.
Under board notes.
No, 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 under.
Wrong meeting.
The meeting, there's two separate meetings on there, you gotta go under the meeting.
Remember, he doesn't know, you can nominate, you can.
No, but he's still trying to get there.
I'm gonna get to.
Okay, um, resolution to appoint candidate to the East Cleveland Public Board. Wait a minute, resolution to appoint candidate to the East Cleveland Library Board of Trustees. Madam President, I recommend that we pass this resolution.
I second you. It has been properly moved and seconded that we, uh, appoint, uh, the, uh, young man, Mr. Wilson, to be East Cleveland Public Library Board. Uh, it has been properly moved and seconded, uh, call for vote.
For term of?
The, uh, legal term, um, and I'll just say that's a legal term. And a legal term is four years, but we put it in our questions as, as five, so, but we gotta, gotta make that clear.
But it is a legal term of four.
Four. Three years. Call for the vote.
Ms. Fountain?
Yes.
Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Wilson passes.
Thank you very much.
We do need to adjourn this meeting to go into the next one.
Madam President, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second, it's been properly moved, seconded that we adjourn, uh, the meeting, uh, for, uh, the library, uh, East Cleveland Public Library Board. Call for the vote.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Fountain?
Yes.
And Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
We will now adjourn from this meeting and we will, now we're going into the next special meeting, so I need to jump out of this one.
This is for the special meeting, the work session.
Oh yeah, do the pledge allegiance.
Got it? Mine's still working. Mine is still buffering. Something's, something's wrong here. Okay, uh, the East Cleveland Board of Education Special Meeting for Monday, October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, is now called to order. Uh, and as is our, um, custom for our work session meetings, it's stand to place of allegiance to the flag, so please join me in that, please. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, peaceful, and just as for all. Thank you. As my, uh, computer is still buffering, I will, uh, need some, uh, help as I'm, as I move along.
May I call the roll, please?
Yes, you may.
We can't hear you.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Fountain?
Yes.
And Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Motion passes. We just go ahead and you got minutes.
Madam President, I make a motion for the approval of the October twenty seventh, twenty twenty five board agenda.
I second. Uh, it's been properly moved and seconded that we approved the agenda for, for today's meeting, October twenty seventh. Call for the approval of the agenda.
Is not online for you?
Yes.
Any comment?
Uh, any points? At the time, it was the same one that, uh, she was preparing to get welcome.
Dr. Rice, would you like for me to call the roll?
I'm sorry, Ms. Wick, I most certainly would love you to do that, thank you.
Did she say no or yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
Dr. Rice?
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
And Ms. Fountain was already in. All votes are in for approval of the agenda.
Madam President, we are moving into finance. Uh, resolution to enter into an agreement with Mr. Steve Barnesworth to facilitate the evaluations of the superintendent and treasurer for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
It's been properly moved.
Motion to enter into an agreement with Mr. Steve Barnesworth to facilitate the evaluations of the superintendent and treasurer for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six school year.
You heard the motion? It's been properly moved and seconded. Call for the vote. Waiting for the vote, Diane.
I see two already.
Mine's not coming up.
Can you call the rest?
I can. Dr. Rice?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
And Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson and Ms. Fountain's vote was yes also.
Okay, um, so motion passes, thank you. Uh, the student wellness and success funds return.
We're still in finance.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Madam President, resolution to change funding source for Caladonia Playground Project, Protect the Coat. Motion to accept change to funding source for Caladonia Playground Project, Protect the Coat.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded. That, uh, any discussion?
I have, um, personally sat down with the treasurer to go over the funds that have to go, um, for Caladonia Playground Project, Protect the Coat. The funds is in the amount of ninety thousand dollars, ninety thousand, four hundred and four dollars.
Ninety thousand.
Four hundred and four dollars from Fund zero, zero, one, dash, nine, one, two, three. Student Wellness Fund and Success Funds for year twenty twenty three. To the General Fund. Zero, zero, one. I approve this, uh, um, resolution.
Okay, get it. The resolution has been made, we've already seconded, so now we, uh, we've heard additional comments? Any additional comments from anyone?
None.
No additional, uh, comments from anyone, ready for the vote?
Ms. Fountain has already voted yes. Uh, Mr. Robinson? I'm sorry?
I voted.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
And Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
All votes are in, motion passes.
Okay, resolution to return student wellness and success funds to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. Motion to return student wellness and success funds to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. This one I will read, um, the resolution to, the resolution to return student wellness and success funds to the Ohio Department of Education of Workforce, O D E W. Whereas the East Cleveland Board of Education will, will return to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce, student wellness and success funds that have not been spent by the end of twenty twenty five, June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. In the amount of two hundred thousand, twenty one dollars, two hundred and thirty five point zero one, therefore be it resolved. East Cleveland Board of Education authorizes the CFO, Treasurer, to return to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce in amount before November first, twenty twenty five.
I second it.
The motion has been made and it has been seconded. Uh, comments or questions?
No, all the questions that I had were answered.
Okay, let me, this is the same, uh, we discussed this at our last meeting, is that correct? That's the same money about Caladonia, uh, so I just want to make absolutely certain that's what we're talking about. Okay, call for the vote.
Uh, Ms. Fountain?
This thing.
Is in yes, Mr. Robinson is in yes. Uh, Dr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
All votes are in, motion passes.
Madam President, this concludes the Finance Department.
Thank you very much, I would appreciate, uh, you sharing those three resolutions with us. Now we're down to, uh, number three for welfare and public relations. Uh, anything that you want to share for welfare and public relations, uh, Mrs. Sanders?
Um, yes, Madam President. Um, I recommend motion to approve the professional leave for board members.
I second it.
Mary Rice? Vernon Robinson and Mary Sanders.
Okay, it's, uh, the motion has been made.
I second.
It's second for Vernon Robinson, questions or comments? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Uh, online voting is on. Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
I voted.
He voted, uh, his vote is in yes, Ms. Fountain's vote is in yes, Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
And Dr. Rice?
Yes.
All votes are in, motion passes.
Thank you, because that concludes welfare and public relations. All right. Is there any other business to come before us before we go into executive session? If not? We are going to go into executive session. Uh, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the superintendent is asking for this executive session. Could you tell us why, uh, so that we can give our reasons?
Personnel.
Okay, so, uh, uh, public employees.
Yes.
Okay, uh, so. Yes.
Yeah, we can do those, the recommendation superintendent, yes.
Well, if you have recommendations.
No, we can, no, we can go in and out, it's not going to take us.
Okay. See, I don't have those.
Right, it's not going to take us a long time. But we definitely need to go in, go personally, and we'll have the Director of Human Resources in with us.
Okay.
Uh, Madam President, I'm moving to be going to executive session. Do you consider the appointment a public and official?
It's been properly moved and seconded that we go into executive session to discuss, uh, the, uh, public and toy lead, um.
May I ask who's second, please?
I need it. Walls.
Superior Walls.
Thank you. Online is open, I'm waiting to see who comes in. Ms. Fountain is in, and Mr. Robinson, Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
And Dr. Rice?
Yes.
All votes are in, motion passes.
And I did think, thinking it was right, but just, yeah, thank you.
Madam President, I make a motion that we return back to regular session.
I second, it's been properly moved and seconded that we return back to regular session. Any questions or comments regarding that? If we have no questions or comments regarding it, uh, call for the vote.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Fountain?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes, we are now back into regular session, and I think, uh, we have your report now, your recommendations. I don't have any of that. Is it, is it over here?
Madam President. Madam President, thank you, um, I do have some recommendations, um, for the board's consideration, and I'm asking for a motion to approve, uh, the appointments on tonight's agenda.
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept Resolution A, the appointments per Dr. Pettigrew.
I second. It's been properly moved and seconded? That we accept the superintendent's, uh, recommendations and appointments. Questions or comments about any of the appointments whatsoever? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Uh, Ms. Fountain and Mr. Robinson are already in, Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
All votes are in, motion passes.
Madam President, we also have, uh, B, retirements, a motion to approve the retirement of Valerie Williams. We want to just thank her, such a wonderful employee in the district for such a long time. Um, she's, she was at Prospect, her last appointment was School Secretary at Prospect, uh, a motion to approve her retirement.
Madam President, I make a motion to, uh, Resolution B, retirement for Dr. Pettigrew.
I second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept that our recommendations of the superintendent regarding retirement. Questions or comments regarding it? I have a student named by the name of Valerie Williams.
Do you know how many years she was in the district, well, like, thirty five? Thirty five years.
I have to. Okay, uh, uh, call for the vote.
I have two votes in, Ms. Fountain and Mr. Robinson, uh, Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
And Dr. Rice?
Yes.
All votes are in, motion passes.
Madam President, my final recommendation for tonight's C, professional leave, I'm asking for a motion to approve professional leave. Uh, there's Title Nine Training, uh, there's also the Ohio Association of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Training. Um, we have some Perkins Training for the, our CTE grant as well, or, or two individuals, or one individual going, I guess, to two different workshops for career tech and grant management. I'm asking for a motion to approve the professional leave listed.
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept Resolution C, professional leave for Dr. Pettigrew.
I second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we accept the professional leave as recommended by Dr. Pettigrew. Uh, uh, any comments and questions? Comments, questions, hearing none, call for the vote.
Dr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Stepmy Walls?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson and Ms. Fountain are in, Mrs. Sanders?
Yes.
All votes are in, motion passes.
Thank you. The only other thing are, are the meetings, and you usually take care of talking about that, do you want to, any information about the meetings that you want to discuss with us?
Ms. Wick?
Yes. Uh, a, a couple of things, uh, the next, at the next meeting, which is actually supposed to be, I believe, is the seventeenth?
Yes.
There will be, um, right now, I think, three board members?
Yes.
That will be attending OSBA. So, um, we'll need to change that meeting.
Right.
Uh, the, the recommended date is November tenth, if that's okay with the board?
Yes, I'm available.
So, okay, why was that meeting scheduled for November seventeen, I'm just curious?
I'm sorry?
Why was the meeting scheduled for November seventeen? Uh, because normally it would have been.
It was the second Monday.
Okay.
So it's just following the schedule.
The seventeenth? I have the first, for November, I have the first Monday is the third, the second Monday as the tenth, so, and then the third Monday is the seventeenth.
Then that is our confusion.
So therefore, it should originally be the tenth, right?
It should have originally been the tenth.
Okay, so that, so we in good shape then, great, the tenth is good.
Okay, yes, that is, the second Monday is the, yeah, November tenth.
Because that's, that's when I had us scheduled.
Okay, yes.
And then the, um, the next meeting would be, let's take a look at that right now, is, is, yeah, well, getting the next regular.
Well, it's the, uh, the, the work session?
November twenty fourth?
Correct.
Okay, sounds good. Excellent, and December the twenty sixth, fantastic, thank you.
Now, uh, the board also, uh, voted to, for Steve Barnesworth. I did receive an email from him, and I was waiting for the vote, and I will read the email to the board, can you hear me? Diane, I hope you are well, it is time to pick a date for our formative assessment, we usually do it in November or December. Please check with Dr. Pettigrew and Dr. Rice, and let me know when we can meet. I have modified the form somewhat to make them easier to use while maintaining their effectiveness, I look forward to hearing from you soon.
Okay, we need to choose a date.
So, my, yes, you need to choose a, a date.
Okay.
So the dates that you have in November.
Let's get, let's get Mr. Robinson first, because you're the one with the, uh, full-time job, right?
November sixteen through the twenty ninth, and the twenty fifth and twenty sixth.
No, you're not, because you, you had an OSBA the sixteen, but anyway.
No, I'm saying over the day, over day.
At that boardroom?
That would be good.
Just do it at the boardroom.
Yeah, I was about to suggest, I was, that's what I was going to suggest, if he was available the tenth or the twenty fourth. And you could do it within those, those meetings. Okay, so I will, I will, uh, send him an email, and then let the board know which of those days he will be available.
Okay, that'll work. And you guys, I have your, uh, votes by then?
Yep.
And, and we have asked if they'd be measurable?
Yep.
Okay. Any other business to come before?
One level or two.
And you know me, before I, uh, before we adjourn, I always give everyone an opportunity to share anything that's on their mind or any final comment. Uh, Mr. Robinson, I always begin with you. Uh, Ms. Walls?
I'm satisfied.
Uh, Ms. Sanders? Uh, Ms. Fountain? Me? That's, oh. Uh, anyone would like to make the motion that we adjourn, anyone interested in doing that at the moment?
Madam President, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I second, it's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn this meeting, does anyone have any questions or comments about the adjournment? Hearing nothing, that, uh, I call for the vote.
Online voting is open. Online voting is open. And Dr. Rice.
Yes.
Ms. Stepmy Walls.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson and Ms. Fountain are in, Mrs. Sanders.
Yes.
I want to change, I want to change.
All votes are in, motion passes. Good night, everybody.
Night. Have a blast, one take care.